Welcome to this Wyndham City Council meeting for Wednesday the 16th of June, where community representatives will present with us their refreshed Wyndham 2040 Community Vision and their place-based priorities for consideration over the next four years. In the spirit of reconciliation, before we begin this meeting, I acknowledge the peoples of the Coolang nation as their traditional owners of the land on which Wyndham is being built. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging. Please stand for the opening prayer and welcome. We pray for guidance in the council's decision-making to achieve the best outcome for the people of Wyndham. Good evening all, I would like to welcome councillors, council staff and of course the members of the gallery that are here with us this evening. I would like to also say a special welcome to the members of the Wyndham community who participated in the process to refresh our Wyndham 2040 Community Vision. Thank you for all who are attending this evening and this very special meeting. It is great to see so many community members here to celebrate this occasion and unfortunately with Covid restrictions, that is restricted. For those here this evening, this meeting is being recorded and livestreamed on the internet. The recording will be archived and made available on council website. Item two on the agenda this evening is apologies, Madam Acting CEO, do we have any apologies this evening?
Yes, Madam Mayor, from councillor Josh Gilligan.
Thank you. Item three, declaration by councillors of conflict of interest, of conflicting personal interest in any item of the agenda. Councillors, are there any conflicts of interest this evening? Thank you councillors. Councillors, I now call for a motion to suspend standing orders in order for council to hear presentations from the community representatives on the Wyndham 2040 vision. Councillors, do I have a mover? Councillor Maynard.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I move that standing orders be suspended to hear presentations from community representatives on the Wyndham 2040 Community Vision.
Thank you councillor Maynard. Councillors, do I have a second, councillor Mufford? Councillors, I now put the motion to a vote. All those in favour? Against, the motion is carried. Thank you. Standing orders are now being suspended. The deliberative engagement process required under the Local Government Act 2020 to refresh the Wyndham 2040 Community Vision has recently been completed. Community representatives from five place-based areas have reached consensus on the vision for Wyndham and refreshed the supporting theme statements. The Community Vision describes the community's hopes, dreams and aspirations for the future. It assists planning for not only what the community needs today, but also what it will need into the future. It is developed by the community for the community. It has been an important process for our community representatives which started back in February this year. They have shown significant dedication and enthusiasm along the way and now get the chance to present their hard work to council. Tonight, we are lucky enough to be able to hear from four of our community representatives who have been involved in the process and learn more about their vision for Wyndham. Firstly, in order for us to better understand the important process they have just undertaken, we would like to present a video highlighting the Help Shape Wyndham's Future project to refresh our Wyndham 2040 Community Vision. We'll now look up at the screens to watch the video, thank you.
In November 2020, council began actively engaging with the community to refresh the Wyndham 2040 Community Vision. We started with a Shaping Wyndham survey, where we asked the community to tell us about their vision for Wyndham. We also ran a series of community conversations with 135 residents that represented the demographics of Wyndham. In these sessions, participants learnt about the opportunities and challenges facing Wyndham, discussed their aspirations and priorities for our city and created a refreshed vision that represents our growing community's needs. Here's a snapshot of what they had to say.
I love the fact that I can walk to absolutely anything. Everything is on my doorstep. I have all of the facilities that I need, great grocery shops, green grocers, the fact that I can walk to a community centre or a library. The joke that we've got is that I can't actually walk to the hospital because that's just a little bit too far. And the cafe culture that Werribee has now, it's second to none and fantastic.
The neighbourhood is very nice. My neighbours are friendly and even strangers I meet are also very welcoming. So it's quite inclusive.
What I like about it is that I'm on a bit of space there, 25 acres, I can have some horses and cows, couldn't do that in reservoir. So really enjoying the lifestyle. And it's only five minutes to Coles.
I signed up to do the community conversations because I have a personal belief that you cannot complain about something happening or not happening if you are not making yourself a part of the process.
The reason that I decided to be part of the community conversation was, I saw a few things that could bring in a change and I thought, well, I can be a voice to change.
Being young now and creating a vision for 2040 is really exciting and it's really great that I get to be a part of it because I'm essentially being a part of a process that's going to shape a future not only for me, but for my family when I decide to have my own.
I think it's important because it gives a roadmap, you know, in terms of where the council is going and what are the plans and the aspirations for the council and how to, you know, work towards achieving those goals and aspirations.
I think, Yola, if you want to achieve something, you have to have a vision, you have to have objectives.
I'd like to see better traffic management around the city, ease of access on the roads. I want to see more done in the way of arts and I'd like to see Wyndham get an art gallery one day.
I'd love to see Wyndham become a place where you never have to leave, that I can work locally, I can easily shop for everything I need and my children can get all of the education and extracurricular activities that they need locally.
My personal vision for the development of the Wyndham area would be for it to stay that sort of rural landscape, but be more inclusive with the whole community.
I think it's really important that the community consulted in this process so that the vision and then the actions that are taken to achieve that vision reflect the views of the community and will result in a happy community.
It's really important to capture not just the demographics, but the vision of people coming from different countries and those who have lived here and grown up here.
I think it's important for council to engage with the community when planning for the future because getting in the public's opinion when making such a decision is a crucial element to minimise opposition and also just make the decision overall beneficial for a wider range of people.
Wyndham City would like to thank our community conversations participants and those who took the time to complete the Shaping Wyndham survey. Your invaluable feedback will help shape Wyndham's future in the years to come.
What a fantastic overview of what you've identified as significant to the Wyndham 2040 Community Vision and what that means to our Wyndham residents. We value the community feedback as it really helps to shape the future of our communities. Tonight councillors, we have four speakers to help us learn more about how each group of community representatives reach consensus of their aspirations and priorities for their local area of Wyndham. I would now like to invite our first speaker, Sarah Allen, who is speaking on behalf of Werribee and the Hoppers Crossing community. Sarah, just up to the lectern, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Wyndham councillors, fellow community conversation delegates, Wyndham residents, ladies and gentlemen. The community conversations brought together a diverse range of individuals from all walks of life with just two things in common: their residential location and a wish to better their community. It is my honour to represent the Hoppers Crossing and Werribee residents and to share our vision for the future of Wyndham. My name is Sarah and I have called Wyndham home my entire life. Born at the original Werribee District Hospital, I grew up in the family home in Hoppers Crossing where my mum and dad still live. When time came to fly the nest, my husband and I chose to settle in Werribee as it offered everything we desired and we could see the evolving changes and potential that it offered. I'm very excited that we soon will be welcoming the next generation of our family and have chosen Wyndham to put down our roots. The community conversation sessions were a highly engaging exercise and one that many of us enjoyed participating in, with lots of lively discussion around what makes each of us passionate about our Wyndham. The process for refreshing the Wyndham 2040 vision and deciding on our priorities for the next four years was an interesting undertaking. Thirty individuals, each with different beliefs, life circumstances and experiences, meant that we came to the table with different priorities. Thankfully, we were guided through the process by our facilitator who stepped us effortlessly through the process, ensuring all points were heard, that we had a comprehension and understanding of the role and responsibility that council has and brought us to an understanding that we all want the same thing in the end: a thriving, happy, healthy Wyndham for all residents. For residents of Hoppers Crossing and Werribee, our top priorities that we would like you, our local representatives to work towards are: investment and maintenance to our roadways and active transport paths to improve traffic flow and safety; enhancement to and greening and beautification to our public open spaces; development and enhancing local education and employment opportunities; implementation of new and investment and improvement to currently current community hubs and activities with diverse programmes being targeted to cater specific groups within our community; advocacy for local medical specialist services; upgrades to services around community wellbeing and safety specific to ambulance and police services in the area; and creating a wow factor, emphasising Wyndham as an ideal destination. Community engagement is paramount and we want to see a two-way dialogue between residents and councillors to continue the conversation and work towards these priorities for better in Wyndham. As an additional avenue to engage with local residents, the community conversations are an invaluable way for residents to feel connected to the decision-making happening at a local level. The priorities presented here tonight provide a roadmap to ensure you as our councillors and we as residents work towards the same goal: a Wyndham we are proud to call home. Thank you.
Thank you Sarah for your presentation. I now would like to welcome John Neamit, who is speaking on behalf of Little River, Werribee South, Mambarin, Corioch, Kwan Dong, Ainsbury and Mount Cotrell community.
Thank you Sarah for that lovely insight into your community engagement activities. Good evening all. My name is John and I'm 23 years old and I've lived in Little River my entire life. I live on an 11-acre hobby farm and I have spent my entire childhood growing up in Little River. I most enjoy the open space and freedom of the natural environment while still having the close access to all the pleasures of the city with only being 20 minutes from central Werribee. Little River has a strong community vibe where everyone knows everyone and we all help each other out, which was something that I found very important to take forward to the community engagement. I also enjoy playing soccer, fishing. As a young member of the community, I believe it is very important for the council to engage and involve a wide selection of community members to represent the voice of the community. When the council engages with the community for their opinions, it removes the chance for disconnect to occur and improves the perspective of the council. I was part of the group combined Little River, Werribee South, Ainsbury and Mount Cotrell. I believe community engagement sessions provided a good opportunity for the council to better understand the needs and priorities for their community. The ways the sessions were structured allowed for everyone to have their own time to explain their priorities and then together for us to build them into a list that we all agreed upon. The priorities that we agreed upon from the Little River group were: to improve public active transport, including walking paths, cycling paths to better connect to communities; promote, maintain and improve the character of our open spaces, the environmental corridors and green wedge and to educate the value of these green spaces; eliminate homelessness in Werribee; provide facilities for the people experiencing homelessness, including services; encourage, mentor and guide youth through education and stewardship programmes into local work; help reskill and upskill mature aged unemployed people; tourism must be a big priority, more festivals, events and to celebrate the many nationalities and talents that we have in Wyndham and push the country to the coast element, rebrand the Werribee image; protect the market gardens, food bowl and promote our rural community, honouring our primary producers prioritising rural land for farming; upgrade local facilities in local communities and to promote opportunities to bring the community together, community information forums and festival events. I think improving active and public transport is very important for not only increasing the health of the public, but also reducing congestion on our very busy roads. Cycling and walking paths are a great way to showcase the wonderful national parks and waterways we have to offer in the Wyndham area, such as the Werribee River, Werribee South and not to forget Little River. Our session group was combined from the rural parts of Wyndham, so we all had a strong connection to protection and improvement for our natural spaces and green wedge, including the market gardens, as we all understood the importance of having locally grown produce, which has been more important since Covid and the reduction of travel. We also spoke about the importance of employment and showcasing the wonderful district we live in, tourism and events like, as well as upskilling and retraining of mature aged workers. As we see large manufacturers leave Australia, these skills are no longer required and often struggle to find new employment. Further, the importance of initial training of youth workers, youth through stewardships and it would be wonderful if we could use these mature aged people to help teach the next generation of workers. As a group, we all had items that we found most important to ourselves, but we also all had very similar ideas on what we found most important. Early on, we agreed that the majority meant that 80% agreed and no one strongly disagreed. This is very important when getting our final vision as well as the priorities, as we felt it was important that what we put forward didn't have any disagreement with some of the members. Even if it wasn't exactly how they wanted it worded, they were happy for it to be put forward. In the end, our group felt that we had successfully put forward a list of priorities that we found all very important, included something from everyone. Thank you.
Thank you John for your presentation. I would now like to welcome Penny Larkins, who is speaking on behalf of Wyndham Vale, Manor Lakes and Werribee West. Sorry, Werribee is west. Penny will also be speaking on behalf of Bijju Baskaran, who unfortunately could not present tonight. Bijju presented in our community conversation session with residents from Tarneat, Chogonaina and parts of Mount Cotrell. Over to you Penny.
Thank you Madam Mayor. First of all, I'll begin with Bijju's testimony. Hello everyone, I am Bijju Baskaran. I have been living in Tarneat for more than 10 years. To me, Wyndham is the suburban boundary. I am not far from the city, but close to the countryside. What a great location, the best of both worlds. It was great to see a lot of commonalities at the same time with different viewpoints. I was extremely pleased with the people at various levels. I met lots of like-minded people with great passion to make this place even better. Important priorities for our group included: public transport, car parking and buses on demand including active transport; infrastructure ready in advance which includes roads, schools, hospitals, community centres and emergency services; more public hospitals and specialist health services including disability, mental health, emergency and age care; and commercial hubs and business parks, supporting local businesses and supporting local jobs. Our group discussed and heard each other's priorities. We picked the common themes. We wanted to see Wyndham become a better place to connect and take the living standards to the next level. With many items on the table, decision-making was not easy. We had members with difference in opinion. We at times had to resort to the majority of people to come to a decision. Thank you. Hello, my name is Penny Larkins. I'm 33 and I live in Werribee. I have two young children and have been in the area for only three years. We came from the inner fringe suburbs of Melbourne to Werribee as we wanted to involve ourselves in a local community and allow our children to experience family-friendly streets and surrounds. There are so many things I love about living in Wyndham, from the incredible selection of playgrounds and open spaces our children visit daily, to being spoilt for choice with a delicious collection of cafes and restaurants, to some of the state's best educational and community services, to that just that simplicity of walking down the street and smiling back at a neighbour. I believe the wider Wyndham communities have so much to offer and there's certainly a lot more I'd like to explore and experience. Being involved in this constant, I keep going over this word, my apologies, this process for the 2040 vision has been fabulous. I am extremely grateful to have had the opportunity for my voice to be heard and to have the ability to contribute to future plans in some small way. I thought these sessions were also a lovely way to meet neighbours, make new contacts and gain an insight as to how other people live in and view Wyndham and hear their experiences. During our sessions held in March, many ideas and opinions were heard with intensive discussions and conversations evolving to develop a vision we could all agree upon. From a personal point, the topic of infrastructure was a high priority for me within this refreshed 2040 vision. Infrastructure is a large umbrella with many working parts, but ultimately I'd love to see better planning for roads and public transport systems as a top priority for Wyndham. We're a rapidly growing LGA and the roads and connections that was empty 20 years ago are today congested. It's difficult to exactly predict where our populations will be sitting by 2040, but we need to be well-equipped with thorough planning. I'd also love to see better access to everyday services like shopping and medical services available via foot and bike paths, encouraging children and adults alike to exercise more and rely on cars less. Wider footpaths and improved interconnection of walking trails should also be included in this infrastructure planning. Health was also a huge topic of priority for myself and most of the members in my group. As our community continues to expand and age, the need for health services should be top of the list. Mental health, age services and family welfare should be closely connected too. Many members of our group were extremely passionate about improving access to health services, including flagging the immediate need for an access to everything hospital, something that perhaps we'd ideally like to see before 2040. Some priorities were difficult to agree on at times. With a wide range of age groups, some members were more passionate about certain topics than others. However, I felt like those with opposing views still had the opportunity to plead their case. All members of the group were rather accepting of each other's opinion and tried to ensure that everyone's voice could be heard and considered. We were all passionate about our suburbs, our community and the lives we lead here in Wyndham. We all had so much to gain contributing to these sessions and didn't want to have a wasted opportunity in voicing our thoughts. Infrastructure and health were certainly the top two priorities of our group, but a close third of high value to most of our group members was the Werribee River and our beautiful natural environment. Our group wanted to ensure the care and preservation for the Werribee River was prioritised. Known as the backbone of Werribee and our surrounds, this river should be celebrated and preserved for our future generations well beyond 2040. Sustainable living was strongly linked and we all agreed there's an obvious need for a better plan developed in regards to improving composting and recycling, taking advantage of natural energy resources and reducing our carbon footprint domestically and commercially. By the end of our sessions, one thing we could all agree on was that Wyndham is the place to live, work and play. It's where rural meets metro and we just hope that our favourite city will only change for the better in these years to come. I, like many others I have spoken with, hope that sessions like these will continue with all projects and future developments planned with local residents in mind and involved in, there's that word again, and involved in the constellation process that, I can't say the word, what is it? The consultation, it's not just possible, my apologies. Every time I rehearsed it, the same thing happened. Thank you again for this opportunity to contribute to this important vision for 2040. I thoroughly enjoyed being involved in this process. I honestly have to say that the city of Wyndham is the best council I have lived in and during difficult times Covid has presented, the city of Wyndham, in my opinion, have shone with numerous community initiatives and support services in place to provide support to those who need it most. There are so many incredible programmes and community facilities, playgrounds and public spaces that I visit regularly and enjoy and the city of Wyndham is where I hope to always live. I can't wait to see where we are in the year 2040 and the success this vision has achieved. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you Penny, the word you were looking for was consultation. And last but not least, this evening, I would like to welcome Austin Equilibum, close enough, who is speaking on behalf of the Point Cook, Williams Landing, Laverton and Laverton North community.
Thank you. Hello everyone, my name is Austin Equilibum and I've lived in the Point Cook area of Wyndham for the last 12 years. I like the area because it's a safe neighbourhood and has a lot of age groups and cultures. I signed up for the Help Shape Wyndham's Future process because I was intrigued by the fact that A, council had a vision for the region, which I was previously not aware of, and B, that council was interested in input from the community. In my past experience, visions tend to be solely top-down driven and so I had never seen a collaborative, top-down and bottom-up approach. I was blown away by the sessions. I found that council really did have a well-thought-out vision for the future of our community. I also learnt of the things that council does, how important your advocacy role is and how tirelessly council and its staff have been working on improvements to our region. So thank you very much for your efforts. The screens show the priorities that the participants from Point Cook, Williams Landing, Laverton and Laverton North came up with. Some major considerations for us when coming up with these priorities were firstly, the concept of a 20-minute city whereby someone in one part of our region can get to any other place in our region, be it home, school, work, shopping, entertainment, recreational or medical facilities within 20 minutes. This would minimise the need for Wyndham residents to travel to the Melbourne CBD or some other external region and would improve the job employment prospects in our region. This consideration was addressed directly by points one, three, five and six in the list. Item four about schools would also benefit because better schools and education will prepare our young people for good jobs later on in life, some of which will be in our region. Item two could also benefit because it may lead to new types of jobs in our region. The second major consideration was improved transport services, both private and public within our region, since these would help us achieve the goal of a 20-minute city for everyone, especially those who do not have personal forms of transportation. This was captured in items seven and eight. The third consideration was improving the quality of schools in our region. We have a lot of children in Wyndham and there are concerns that our current schools are struggling to cope with the numbers. We want to build Wyndham's reputation as a centre of learning and ensure that our children have good teachers, good resources and everything that will set them up for lifelong learning. This was captured in item four. In terms of how the sessions went, fortunately for us in our sessions, I think most things were easy to agree on. Sometimes we differed on the wording of items or the rankings, but overall you could see that all the participants were genuinely interested in what was best for the entire region and they were all fun to work with. I would gladly work with all of them again. Thank you very much council for the efforts you and your team put into this vision and the activities surrounding it. Good leaders always have good visions and plans for those in their care and they also work on practical ways for their people. work on practical ways for their people to achieve those goals. The fact that council has incorporated input from the community means that this truly is a shared vision and I for one would like to see this vision fulfilled because I'm sure it'll be wonderful, or as the young people say these days, pog? Well, and now I'd like to share our vision for Wyndham. A safe, connected and inclusive community. We respect, acknowledge, value and celebrate the First Nations people, our heritage, cultural diversity and multicultural strengths. Our community has the infrastructure and services it needs to support holistic health and wellbeing for all. Local employment and education facilities are plentiful and there are a variety of recreational, leisure, tourism, art and cultural opportunities for everyone to experience throughout the municipality. We preserve our natural environment and rural lifestyle. We are able to get around easily and get to where we want to go efficiently. We are self-sufficient and pride ourselves on being green and sustainable. Thank you. I would now like to present our vision to the Madam Mayor.
Thank you Austin for that and thank you to Sarah, John and Penny for your presentation this evening. It has been wonderful to hear from you and to hear firsthand of your experiences throughout the community conversations and your vision for Wyndham. So thank you again for your assistance in this and also all other community members. Councillors, I now call for a motion to resume standing orders. councillor Maynard?
Thank you Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I move that standing orders be resumed.
Councillors, do I have a second to that motion? Councillor Zakowski? Councillors, now put the motion to a vote. All those in favour? Against, the motion is carried. Item 5 of tonight's agenda is 5.1, Wyndham 2040 Community Vision. The report is on pages 6 to 18 of the agenda with the recommendation on page 7 and the attachments on pages 19 to 101. Councillors, do I have a mover? Councillor Barrera, seconded by councillor Maynard. Councillor Barrera is the mover of the motion, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes please, Madam Mayor. Look, thank you to the speakers and thank you to the community members who are here tonight. I'm personally extremely grateful and proud of the vision that you have tweaked and created for us going forward. It proudly celebrates the vigour and the enduring spirit of our great city and takes pride in the colourful tapestry of traditions and cultures into one vibrant community. Over and over, we heard community members talk about the value they place on the diversity of culture, faith, language and heritage and how those elements are celebrated in Wyndham. And what a wonderful testament to this great city, what a wonderful statement that our community not only thrives but embraces and blossoms because of our differences, that by harnessing the vitality and the creativity of the people of the world, we build a confident and a dynamic and a wonderfully diverse city. So I thank the residents for embracing a commitment to each other and to the fundamental principles that unite us and to a future that we will all share together. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Barrera. Any other councillors which should speak on this item? Councillor Maynard?
Thank you Madam Mayor. What can I say, outstanding and I would have expected nothing less. Certainly, you know, the refreshed 2040 Vision shines a spotlight on the important role physical activity plays in Wyndham's health and wellness. And as the portfolio holder for Active City, I'm, you know, I'm astounded, or amazed I should say, you know, the input and the feedback that we've received from the community for this vision. And fostering an active community was consistently identified by our residents as a current strength of our city and something to be preserved and strengthened in the future. Wyndham's parks and open spaces were frequently mentioned as places where people love to spend time in, as were leisure facilities like pools, gyms and sports clubs. And councillors most certainly working hard to ensure that this continues and grows in the future. We are determined to provide residents with greater access to active, accessible and sustainable modes of transport and to connect them with nature and the outdoors. And to ensure persons of every age, background and ability can weave some form of activity into their daily habits to improve their mental and physical wellbeing. The refreshed 2040 Vision and your presence here inspires us to redouble our efforts. And I thank our residents for promoting healthy life choices and active lives. This will most certainly have a great impact on the general health and wellbeing of our community. Thank you Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Maynard. Any other councillors which should speak on this item? Councillor Marcus?
Thank you Madam Mayor and thank you to everybody. I'm your oldest councillor and I've lived in this city for 52 years and our speaker from Warrabie Hoppers Crossing, I probably know your mum and dad, and it's wonderful. For many, many years now, we have looked forward to working with all of our community members so that you have a say in what you want to see here in our city. You have said it all tonight. It was just wonderful to hear each speaker as you came up to talk, the passion that flowed from your hearts was absolutely beautiful. And our speaker from Little River, only 23, absolutely fabulous. You mentioned Warrabie South, which is also very important to our city as our food bowl. But it was lovely to hear also that mental health, mental health at the moment, I sit in day and day out listening to all the people coming to us with mental health issues. This last two weeks has certainly been the most horrendous time for everyone. Thank you everybody for what you are doing. I do hope that you will keep in touch with all of us so that we can make sure that all of these lovely plans that you've put forward are implemented and that we make our city. When I came, 13,000, Heath's Road wasn't even made up, two schools and two kindergartens and look what we have today. But we have to make sure that we continue because our population is going to grow to something like 400,000. So we need all of you people, please make sure you keep in touch with us and let's work together to make Wyndham an even better, safer, family-friendly city. So thank you all to everybody.
Thank you councillor Marcus. Councillor Zakowski?
Thank you Madam Mayor. As an elected representative, I'm actually genuinely grateful for this document. It's an amazing resource as elected representatives for us to have, to have this insight. The value of it can't be understated. Your participation in this process has made and will make a genuine contribution to our collective future. So I thank you for that. As the portfolio holder of the climate futures and environment portfolio, I'm proud to share the following remarks in regards to this document. So here in Wyndham, we have a significant environmental assets, rare flora and fauna, expansive grassland, sorry, expansive grasslands, natural coastline, sites of international migratory importance and unique waterways and wetlands. Under the refreshed Wyndham 2040 Community Vision, there is a clear message that our residents want to ensure these public amenities are protected while building a healthy and sustainable city. As the vision shows, balancing our suburban growth environment with open and country spaces is seen as important by the community. In particular, residents feel that looking after rivers and wetlands and keeping them free from litter and rubbish is crucial. In addition, the community is concerned about climate change and the environment impacts that they may face, wanting to embrace more sustainable approaches to living. Our environmental legacy will not reflect any single policy or initiative, it will be the sum of the decisions we make each day. I therefore thank the community for raising their voices and standing up for our planet and our future.
Thank you councillor Zakowski. Councillor Ramesh?
Thank you Madam Mayor. Firstly, I'd like to thank all of the speakers and all the community members present with us today. There are two important events that should be celebrated today. Firstly, having a fresh and vibrant vision for a 2040 Wyndham is integral to the health of our council and through this our community. We may have the best staff, the best leaders and thinkers, but as Austin has quite rightly pointed out, without an aligned vision of where we want to get to, we're likely to find that all we are great at is doing what we've already done. Progress starts with a vision, alignment starts with a vision and alignment leads to productivity, innovation and creativity. I wish to acknowledge and celebrate the community contribution that is apparent in this document and here today. I applaud those of you that have taken the time to participate and go through this process and provided your valuable feedback and advice. The council is its people. If we are to have any hope of improving the lives of our community, we first need them to have a desire to participate. My sincere thanks to each and every one of you that have shared your thoughts with us and made this vision that bit stronger and more valuable in this process.
Thank you councillor Ramesh. Any other councillors which should speak? Councillor McIntyre?
Thank you Madam Mayor. Well, good evening everyone. It's great to be able to see you all, even if it's only just part of you with the face masks and obviously the restricted number of people that be able to attend tonight. I wanted to echo first what many other councillors have said, just one big thank you. Thank you for your time, your energy and your commitment to this Wyndham 2040 Community Vision process. I followed the process with interest, excited to see the results and thank you to all those who have spoken tonight, Sarah, John, Penny and Austin, representing their areas so eloquently. Working together as a community, we can really achieve so much. It's so important that everyone feels they have a voice. It isn't always the case that we should rely on traditional methods of community engagement that can favour those who often are the most confident or who have the loudest voices if the data doesn't back those up, those asks. We need to ensure that our planning takes into account all our residents' needs and aspirations. That is why this deliberative engagement process is just so important. As councillors, we have no higher responsibility than protecting the safety of our residents. Through his feedback, we heard that you, our residents, talk about Wyndham being a great place for families and how you value the long-term family ties to our area and the family-friendly environments available in Wyndham. Fostering a safer community is important for everyone irrespective of age, as is feeling connected, not only to your own social network but also to the services and infrastructure we need to lead happy, healthy lives. By this process this evening, we are all reaffirming our commitment and acknowledging that we are going to work together collectively to tackle this issue and foster positive behavioural changes right across our society. I truly believe that by striving to do our part together, day by day, step by step, together we will build a safer and more secure Wyndham. Thank you Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor McIntyre. Any other councillors which should speak on this item? Councillor Shaw?
Thank you Madam Mayor. Let's be better, I think. Also, thank you from myself, I think it was excellent to read the document, I haven't read it in detail yet but certainly to look through it all, but I was really here tonight to listen to the people that have spoken and I think you all spoke so well to get up and do that, one, it's being livestreamed and two, to do that in front of, you know, a councilor group, I think is tremendous and I think you all did a fabulous job. Like Sarah, I grew up here in Wyndham, I also know Sarah's mum too, so, and I think that I certainly can relate and some of the messages and some of the actions that we've got around wanting to sometimes not leave the municipality, if that's what we can do around education, around working. I think Sarah will know, you know, certainly growing up here, we could only educate ourselves to a certain point and then if you wanted to go to university, you had to leave the city and generally had to leave when you needed to work as well and certainly that's what I had to do and certainly a lot of people my age group have done and continue to do and it's something that as the future-focused economic development portfolio holder, I'd like to see us change and I know we have been doing a lot of work at council at doing that and we will continue to work on our local economy and our local jobs and certainly we'll continue to do that over the next four years and with the information and the work that you've done on this as well. It was also great to see the family-friendly theme come through and the parks, open spaces and other infrastructure and services that we provide around trying to be a family-friendly city. Last term, I was actually the family-friendly city portfolio holder, so it's something that we actually did a family-friendly charter, which I think was nearly the first of its kind of Victoria to obviously start really at council, bringing that as part of our decision-making process and part of our decision-making framework. So great to see that theme continue through this vision as well and I know as a councilor group, we'll all be working to ensure that we continue to make Wyndham not only a great place to live but certainly continue to make it a family-friendly city. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Shaw. Any other councillors which should speak? Councillor Hill?
Thank you so much Madam Mayor. Thank you to all the presenters tonight, Sarah, John, Penny, Austin and the presentations being presented by Penny as well. And it's such a, just emotional touching moment to see the smile and also the sense of just settling in Wyndham. I certainly felt it myself, been travelling around, living in different countries around the world and finally settled down, this is the place that I'm like, I'm leaving possibly for the rest of my life. Yeah, so it's really such a good feeling. So thank you so much for all the community members who is attending today and also who actively participate. Just now I spoke to some of the community members, Lachlan, and he said it's such a joy, such a pleasure, it's really enjoying the process of like engaging in this entire process. So I'm very, very pleased to hear this. And also like, I just remember a couple of months ago when we, the council, we engaged with some, even the children, not just all the adults, but also children, the little children, we went to the community centres and spoke to those little children and about 120 children, we've been reaching out to them, asking them, what do you like about Wyndham, what do you like about this? And then they actually told us, like, they actively put their hand up. It was just such a touching moment, so it's really, I also want to congratulate council for doing such a great job, reaching out to community at the same time, community actively participate and actually want to engage with council, this is exactly how things should work and I just feel very pleased and that we are in this space and within the journey. So Wyndham 2040, it's like, everything happened twice, so we visualise what is going to happen. Then we, like Austin mentioned about roadmap, we are heading towards where we are heading to. In the middle, if we think these things are not quite right, then we can always make changes along the way. So thank you so much to all the community members who participate. So through the refreshed 2040 Vision, we have heard Wyndham residents stress the need for more schools in our community to meet the growth in children and young people living in our municipality. I just want to pick that point because as a Wyndham City, Learning City portfolio holder, I just want to reaffirm our community members, our commitment, council's commitment to provide learning opportunities for all our residents. We will work collaboratively with the state and a federal government to provide more schools, even though it's not really council job, but we will be supporting it and to complement any learning needs. I'm determined to ensure every Wyndham resident has the opportunity to develop their talents to the maximum possible extent. We will continue to work with other levels of government to ensure the quality of our education, which is mentioned in the report itself, and is equal to our children's and young people's capacity and the hunger to learn. I believe that every child in Wyndham has a unique talent and abilities. They are the future of our city. We are planning for our city in the future. And through a partnership approach between government, schools, tech schools, non-for-profit businesses and our diverse communities, which is strongly represented here tonight, if you look around the room here, it's very diverse, the community that come to engage with us. We will continue to cater career pathways to harness the talents and experience of our residents. The vision underlies a collective commitment to this objective and goes to the core of our egalitarian values, the belief that learning opportunity is a right for... our egalitarian values, the belief that learning opportunity is a right for every resident. In addition, a key role of my portfolio is to ensure services such as community centres, learning hubs, kindergartens and libraries provide and promote a wide varieties of learning opportunities for all our residents across all ages and all stages of life, from birth to death. For example, another thing highlighted in the report as well, Wyndham libraries are a strength of our community. So really, I want to congratulate our offices working in this area too. Libraries are an integral part of our city where residents can come and discover a wealth of information and hours of enjoyment, opening doorways to opportunity, transporting us across time and space and binding family and friends closer together. This vision ensures future generation will continue to be inspired and guided by the ideals, the values and the thirst for knowledge that are at heart of our community. If we don't learn, we will not stay still, we will actually go backward. We all need opportunity to learn in this ever-changing world. I salute the people of Wyndham for giving powerful voice to this objective. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hill. Councillor Muffood?
Thank you, madam mayor. I too, madam mayor, through you, would like to thank all participants in creating this vision. As councillors, of course, we've had some input, but it's through you and it's with you that we've created this plan, this vision, this 2040 vision. We couldn't have done it without you and we couldn't have certainly gotten that input that's really made this a, a community plan, really made this something special. Together, we've set the vision with clear goals and priorities. Together, we've set indicators to ensure we stay on the right path and ensure we're making progress. As a council, along the way, we will keep the community informed. Once every twelve months, a bit of a snapshot, where we're at. Once every four years, we'll see if the goals and priorities are the same. If we need another refresh, we could do another similar process. This is such an important vision document. We'll refer back to this plan with every decision we make and ensure Wyndham continues to be the great city we live in. I think we can all agree and all participants agree that this is a fantastic city, is a great city. There's many words that come to my mind when I think about the city of Wyndham, I think about Wyndham between now and 2040. It is, seems like a long way away, but it will just come within a flash. Two words come to my mind straight away, and I think challenges and opportunities. I think you've probably all heard me say that. Challenge, we have challenges, of course, we know we have challenges, it's been outlined in the document, just looking at our growth alone, making sure infrastructure keeps pace with the growth, not just physical infrastructure, I mean the social infrastructure too, ensure we stay the vibrant, growing community that we are. Of course, with that too, we have opportunities, many opportunities, to create an even greater city, an even more vibrant city and even more connected city. So I think through this vision, and I can not say enough, cannot applaud the community enough for putting in these indicators, I think we will get there, we will continue to be a great city, we'll be a better city. And really, I think we're just going to go from strength to strength, madam mayor. And our strength as a community has always been from our ability to see ourselves and each other and to find our common humanity. Through the updated 2040 vision, we have heard residents recognise and celebrate our community as a place for creativity, arts and cultural connection. Of course, madam mayor, I'm focusing on the culture and the arts with my next few words as a portfolio holder for Creative City. So throughout Wyndham, our creativity tells a story of our diversity and unites us all, irrespective of race, gender or creed. Through our local artists, we learn the heritage of our fellow residents and appreciate their story is an integral part of our own. As council's Creative City portfolio holder, I'm determined to further cultural exchanges, collaborative projects and education programmes to help shape and preserve the initiative, spirit and traditions of our community and to provide future generations with opportunities to unleash their artistic expression and reach new heights. We rely on our local artists to broaden our views and remind us of the truths that connect us. Their works uniquely mark our city and play an important role in telling our story. Creativity and a thirst for understanding are the fuel that has fed our city's success. And I thank our residents for ensuring this is not only recognised but celebrated now and to the future. Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you, councillor Muffood. Councillors, before I put the motion to a vote, I'd just like to say a few words. I am delighted to have accepted this refreshed Wyndham 2040 Community Vision. Firstly, I would like to thank our four community conversation representatives, John, Penny, Sarah and Austin, for delivering the vision for, as well as sharing your experiences. I'd like to acknowledge Bijou, who was no longer able to make it tonight. I'd like to recognise the many other community members who haven't been able to come to tonight's meeting due to the current COVID-19 restrictions. We look forward to celebrating with all of you real soon. And I would like to thank the almost one hundred community members who gave up their time and participated in the community conversation sessions. It was wonderful to see both long-term and new residents participating in such an important process for Wyndham. These community conversations and the refreshed vision help us to continue to meet the new and emerging needs of our community. Not only does this ensure our priorities are council's priorities, or sorry, rather, your priorities are council's priorities, it also ensures other levels of government, businesses, industry group and community organisations share in this vision and work towards achieving it with us. This has been a significant and important process which started back in February 2021. It builds on the engagement that took place in 2016 when the first community vision was developed. Since then, a lot has changed, and I can guarantee that because I was mayor in 2016 and here I am again in 2021, it definitely has changed. The Wyndham community has seen new development and a flurry of new residents from a wide variety of backgrounds calling our suburbs home. Moreover, the devastation of the COVID-19 pandemic, the loss of lives and livelihoods cannot be forgotten. Yet with every moment of despair in this past year, we banded together and will continue to build back better as we recover and emerge even stronger through the recovery phase. It is therefore wonderful to see the willingness of residents from all across Wyndham to continue to come together for the betterment of our community. It sends a strong message that by welcoming community ideas, engagement and leadership, council can be a powerful collaborative tool towards a brighter future for everyone. As councillors, our role now is to take the vision and strive to make it a reality. The Wyndham 2040 Community Vision will guide how council directs the resources under its control. It sets the direction for future council policies and work, including the municipal, public health and wellbeing plan, asset plan and long-term financial plan. Council will present its strategic priorities to work towards the vision in its four-year council plan and on an annual basis through our annual plan and budget. Over the next few months, we have been preparing our twenty-one, sorry, over the last few months, we have been preparing our twenty-one, twenty-two annual budget and plan. And I'm pleased to say that some of the priorities you have talked about tonight have been included. There is $27 million of upgrade and build for new local roads, $29 million for sports and recreation infrastructure and $2 million for playground and park upgrades. We have supercharged our investment in our active transport network, invested in greening the pipeline and the essential services we know are vital for our families, young people and older people. It is important to recognise that some of the vision's aspirations cross interstate and federal areas of responsibility. Given this, we are determined to forge strong partnerships with other levels of government and key partners to ensure investment in our municipality meets the growing needs of our community. Ultimately, achieving the community vision requires every one of us to work together. Everyone who lives, works, studies or visits Wyndham has a role to play in helping achieve the Wyndham 2040 Community Vision. Our community will continue to grow and change, bringing with it opportunities and challenges. Only by working together can we ensure Wyndham continues to be a great place to live, work and play. Indeed, the energy and purpose of everyone here reminds us that the best way to strengthen our community is to become actively involved within it. I thank you for taking the time to be part of our community conversations and for representing your local area of Wyndham. I'm very proud to work alongside all of you to help shape Wyndham's future and achieve our shared vision. Councillors, I now put this motion to a vote. All those in favour? Against, the motion is carried. Item six on the agenda is to close the meeting, and again, I would like to thank everyone for being here this evening who has attended. It has been fantastic to see you all and thank you for your, for taking the time to be involved and part of the consultation process that's gone out there and to also place the vision of our, for our future before us. I now declare the meeting closed at eight PM, and I would like to invite you all to join the councillors and myself for some light refreshments. Thank you.